Okay, if we can get everybody to start taking their seats.
Oh, oh.
We will get started. Call me in order, Ms. Whitby, will you call roll please?
Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor. Not here. Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Fouch.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Acquorum is present, sir.
Thank you, I invite you to stand for the prayer and pledge led by Alderman Robinson.
Thank you. Dear Lord, we thank you for another day and another opportunity to take care of business on behalf of the residents of the city of North Little Rock. I ask that you lead and guide us and that you be with us throughout this meeting. These are the blessings we ask, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
To approve the minutes and the special call from the last meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby, let's go into special call.
Special call, okay. This is an email, Friday, June the 10th, 2016, from City Attorney Jason Carter. Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 13, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. Following will be on the agenda, R-16102, a resolution approving an adjustment to the 2016 Annual Action Plan to increase the funding amount for home projects in accordance with the increase in 2016 home funding to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Joe A. Smith. R-16103, certifying local government endorsement of Orbea USA LLC to participate in the tax-backed program as authorized by Section 15-4-2706D of the Consolidated Incentive Plan Act of 2003, for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Joe A. Smith, and this is pursuant to Section 2-482 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code and all members reply to the email regarding the same. The first item is R-16102, do you want me to call it?
Please.
A resolution approving an adjustment to the 2016 Annual Action Plan to increase the funding amount for the home projects in accordance with the increase in 2016 home funding to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I think we need to have a hearing on this, I believe.
Melissa? No.
No, okay.
It's a thousand dollar adjustment, basically, is all it is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
That's why I just wanted, you know, sometimes when you hear that you've had a, you know, adjustment or an increase, it's a thousand dollars, this, well, eleven hundred fifteen.
Yeah.
Melissa's here, so I just didn't want anybody to think that we got a whole lot more money, unfortunately.
Eleven hundred fifteen dollars, okay, thank you.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. R-16103, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution certifying local government endorsement of Orbea USA LLC to participate in the tax-backed program as authorized by Section 15-4-2706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Motion.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Can you explain this just a little bit?
Can we explain it?
Can you just kind of put Orbea, just let everybody know what's going on?
Well, Orbea is moving their national corporate headquarters here along with their distribution center, and this legislation allows them to file for tax-backed incentives from the state of Arkansas. We are excited about them coming. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, that's a special call, that's all of that, thank you. Let's go to communications.
You actually have twelve altogether.
All right.
We would like to pull number six.
Accept and file, one through twelve.
Hold on, Matt.
Second.
We're gonna pull six.
Okay.
Any others?
I wanna pull ten, but I think that we have someone here to speak on, so I don't know if we wanna wait till a public comment for that, or...
Your call, I don't care.
Ten, and we'll get both.
All right, how about a motion to accept one through twelve, is that what you said? We did that.
Yes, and we already have that.
Except six and ten.
We already have that.
Oh, we did that, Mary did that, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, number six.
In its entirety, please.
Number six, in its entirety, okay. Letter dated June 2nd, 2016, to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, the North Little Rock Police Department is preparing to apply for the 2016 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant and where eligible for a $41,290 award. The police department plans on purchasing one fixed license plate reader for investigation purposes. Five tablets are to be purchased for patrol zone supervisors, which will allow them to spend less time in substations. Ten tasers will also be purchased, which will allow more officers to have one issued and provide less lethal options for officer security, or officer safety. It is hereby requested that a public hearing on these proposed purchases be held at the city council meeting on June 13, 2016, as required for this grant. Sincerely, Chief Mike Davis, North Little Rock Police Department.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
Do we need to...
Well, we can do it right now, we're required to have a public hearing, so I'm gonna call a public hearing on this right now. Is there anyone here to speak on this application for this grant? Seeing none, close public hearing, on the motion to accept.
On the motion to accept the communication, Ross.
Yes.
White. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, and number ten, you want, kind of by title?
Title, if you can just kind of...
Okay. This is a flyer that was provided to the city clerk's office by Mr. Hank Klein, it's regarding cash max loan services, and the flyer includes installment loan percentage rates and other information.
Okay, how about a motion?
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
I understand Mr. Klein is here, is gonna speak during the public comment and give us his opinion on this, okay? Thank you. Okay, I think we can go on into new business.
Let me get all the communications out of the way. All right, new business, R-1696, Mayor Smith.
Please, yeah, please call it.
Resolution reappointing Vicki Matthews to the North Little Rock Library Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Public comment, do we have any public comment?
On what? No, we didn't have any, no. On the motion.
On the motion on R-1696, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-1697, Alderman Robinson.
Let's stop out there just for a minute, Vicki's now here, Crystal's here. Vicki has been the chairman for the last year or two of the library and led us through a very trying time, trying to find a new director, and she really held on to the reins and went bunk and bronco and got it tamed and brought in just a wonderful lady in Crystal, and so if Vicki's at home listening, thank you Vicki for your past service and your future service, you've done a great job and we look forward to more good work. Also, I might make a note that Hal Matthews, Vicki's husband, is leading the charge on creating a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that will be the Friends of the Library, and Jason's reviewing that and is gonna bless that, and then we're gonna take it to Secretary of State's office and get that going. So I encourage everybody out there to try to be a member of this, and it'll be fun, we'll have some fun, we'll, you know, we'll help the library as best we can and have fun at the same time. So again, Vicki and Hal, thank you for all you do. Okay, next one.
R-1697, Alderman Robinson and Taylor.
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas to utilize federal aid, Arkansas Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP funds, for the Bishop Lindsey escape project from Vine Street to Hickory Street.
How about a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
Alderman Taylor and I are really excited about this. We have for quite some time wanted to take care of Bishop Lindsey, and we heard about this grant that was out there through the Highway Department, and it's called Transportation Alternatives Program. And what it is, is an eighty-twenty match, they pay eighty percent, and we come up with the twenty percent. We've discussed this with the neighborhood group down there, and they're real excited about this, so we look forward to receiving this grant and being able to take care of Bishop Lindsey from Vine Street to Hickory Street.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-1698, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the low bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Cranford Construction Company for the 2016 Asphalt Overlay Program.
Move for adoption.
Second. Questions, Ms. Ross?
I just wanna add one thing too here, I know that around the high school, Maple Street, 21st to 22nd, that ward fund, and that was one of the things that we, it was not on this list, but this is one that the Ward One is coming out of the Ward One funds to do that block, so that they will, it will be repaired.
Yeah, it's on the list. Chris is shaking his head, yes.
Well, it's not on this list.
Right. On the motion. Sorry.
When we first started this overlay project back a couple of years ago, under your tenure, we were, the plan was to set aside a little bit of money each year so we could extend this out an additional time, is that still our way ahead?
Yeah, we've been bringing in approximately, Karen, seven hundred thousand a year, seven fifty on this penny.
I have seven.
Now, I call her off guard, but yes, we're not spending every bit of it, so unless the state pays off those bonds early and that penny goes away, we'll keep doing it.
Okay.
You know, even past, you know, whenever. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-1699, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing refunding of the 2011 North Little Rock Electric Revenue Bonds.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any questions, comments, on the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-16100, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing redemption of the 2012 C. North Little Rock Electric Revenue Bonds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion, Ms. Comments?
Can we go over again how much this is gonna save the city by doing this?
Yeah, we can, let me lead you into this just for, just a little bit. For the past three years, we've been watching this money and trying to save this money. Jason and I referred to it as zombie money, and we kept it in the corner, hoping that we weren't gonna need it, and after two years of our, the new way that we're doing business at the Electric Department, we realized that we could take, I wanted ten million and the group got me down to seven point nine, so we were able to pay off eight million dollars worth of bonds, which I think is the best business decision for the citizens and the ratepayers and taxpayers, and so we were able to do that and then refinance with the help of Jack and people at Stevens to figure out a way to lower that. So we're, this is a double whammy, we're lowering that, we're paying down some bonds, great management on Electric Department, Scott, James, Jason, and then of course Karen and Danny, working so closely with them, so I wanna say thank you to all of them that worked really hard in coming up with this, so Jason.
The only thing that I'd add, Mayor, that's a good description of exactly what we're doing, I agree with all that, with the refunding issue, that's gonna still have to come back to you again, we wanted a commitment to make sure that's what you wanted to do, you know, as a council, certainly we recommend it, but it's this council's decision. By marching forward, we'll get bond council, you know, it's gonna be another bond issue, it's just gonna be at a lower interest rate, that'll save us money. On the second issue with the refunding bonds, that's authority for us, you know, you're giving, if you vote for that resolution, that's given us the authority to repay those bonds right now and get that debt off of our books, so there'll be no further action that's required.
And the amount of money that we're saving by doing this?
So our annual savings by both of those is gonna run around a million and a half a year, so that's gonna reduce our, you know, net outflows. Of course, we'll take our capital down with our one redemption, but it's gonna reduce our net outflows together by about a million and a half a year. Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar interest rate reduction, approximately, annual savings, and then, you know, with the debt service on the other bond that we're paying off is about one point four million, it's actually two issues that run together and they vary in amount, but that's about what the total is year to year.
And I assure you, we're gonna watch that money, we're saving this money not to go spend it, I mean, we'll, I mean, I'm hoping that we can prepay some things, so, you know, we're gonna have to work on the hydro plant, you know, in the future, so I assure you that we're gonna use the best managers that we have, which are best in the state, if not the country, and we're gonna make sure this works for us and it helps us in the future. Ms. Ross?
Was a large portion of that not to go to replenish the reserve also, though? Did I misunderstand?
Yeah, that's what we've talked about right now, is as far as the money that we save under our current rate structure, you know, that should reduce our expenses, but then that excess funds can be used to replenish our reserves and then used for a similar purpose as the mayor discussed, you know, you can't help but think about what productive use we could use for that money, the most productive discussion has been, keep getting rid of this debt, seems to be like a good idea.
All right, it's time. I don't care. Where are we, Ms. Whitby?
Ready to call the roll.
Call the roll.
Okay, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-16101, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Polaski County Tax Collector against certain rural properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move, spin the read, oh wait, it's a public hearing, move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on R-16101, anyone here to speak on that, R-16101? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinances O-1635, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance adopting Chapter 14 on Storm Water Management as part of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, repealing ordinances number 7952 and 7953, first reading.
Will it spend readings?
Move to spend all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
About a motion to adopt? What about a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, I've got a question.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
And a question.
Okay, all right, Mayor, I guess I was curious in reading this, that we did not adopt verbatim state regulation and federal regulation, and I was just curious, you know, why?
Chris, can you address that, or Sean?
I'm sorry, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't, I meant to call you earlier today.
If I can, kind of give an introduction of that while Chris is walking up, of course, he's gonna be the subject matter expert on this, but procedurally, we've adopted most of these rules already, so there's some amendments that are put in place, but we felt like pulling it all together, you know, we're trying to go through and codify our rules again, you know, and being pretty methodical about it, that's how we pulled our existing rules across into a new chapter and then incorporated the amendments that worked through with Chris.
What particular...
Well, just, you know, one of the ones that comes to man is, you have an option of doing inspections every seven days or every fourteen days with a rainfall twenty-four hours afterwards, and I noticed you left out the seven-day option, which would seem prudent on large projects. And I might criticize, and I'm just, you know, I'm just asking, why?
Let me, let me explain, you were combining some of our stormwater regulations into, let me explain what this ordinance is for.
I know what it's for.
You understand the pages part of it?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. We might should look at that, I'd have to review that a little bit closer.
Why don't we go ahead and approve it as is, and then let Chris look at it, if we need to come back and amend it, we can, does that work for you?
Yeah, like, as I said, you know, I was just curious, I wasn't critical of it.
Well, let me just say this to all the councilmen, this was mostly about helping finish out our stormwater inventory for our city. What pages, which is Plasky Area GIS, what they came to us about a year ago was an offer, basically, we pay a certain amount of fee to be a member of pages every year, so they came to us about a year ago and suggested starting a program for gathering stormwater inventory information, and the condition for that, and that could be, that could be of value to the city in the neighborhood of six figures. What they wanted us to assure them is that for when you had new development within the city, that we would be responsible from this point forward in gathering all stormwater information and inventory within our street right of ways and what we maintain. So that was, that's the overall purpose, if what you're saying's not in there, it was not in there previously, and we could look to add that to the regulations. But again, this is about helping us fulfill our stormwater inventory. Right now, we've got about sixty percent of the city covered in our GIS system, we're lacking about forty percent of the area, and pages is offered to assist us if we'll do this program with helping finish out that forty percent, which basically means that any developer coming into our town is gonna be required to funnel us information in a good, useful way that we can download it into our GIS system, so.
And I'm assuming in order to comply with the MS4...
That is exactly what this is about.
Regulations that...
Yes, sir.
You know, are we gonna up the ante on charges for these, these projects, are we gonna have a charge, I know, I know there's certain requirements.
Is it gonna cost the developers and engineers a little bit more money to get the information in the format? It won't be very much with today's electronic, the way they generate their plans, it should be fairly easy, but there'll be a little bit of extra work for, for the consultants, but they will know about that as they come through our system.
And I guess I was thinking about costs to us on a long-term basis, compliance.
There's a little bit of effort that our GIS and engineering will have to do on every development to get this information in our system properly, but Sean and I have coordinated on that and we have a plan for accomplishing it.
Thanks, Chris, I'm good.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1636, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance submitting North Little Rock regulations to control development and subdivision of land, first reading.
How about a motion, suspend?
Move to suspend readings.
Readings. We have a motion and a second by Ward Three to suspend all readings.
Second.
They did it at the same time, you know.
I got them both.
All right, on the motion.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson. You're suspending the readings on O-1636.
I know what we're talking about, thank you so much.
So, did Robinson say yes?
Yes.
Okay, Baxter.
Yes.
Fouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1637, Alderman Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow outdoor rental storage in a C4 zone for property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules placed on the second reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow outdoor rental storage in a C4 zone for property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
About a motion?
Move to suspend the rules placed on the third reading.
About a second?
Second.
Comments?
Alderman, Taylor, and I are very happy about what HUMS Hardware has done on East Broadway. You know, as most of you may know, they've built over a million dollar building, well over a million dollar building, with their supplies and all. And what this legislation will do is, next door to it used to be a halfway house, so they've torn down the building and they're just going to extend some of their equipment onto this lot and they'll put up a privacy fence. And we're real comfortable about sponsoring this because, number one, there are no residences next door to this property, not in front of it or behind. They're, they're neighbors or businesses, and these businesses are quite happy about what HUMS has done on East Broadway, and so are we.
On the motion.
Motion to suspend the reading, the rules.
I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor.
I guess I just have one question. I want to make sure that the same condition that we put on them on the adjacent property is going to be a condition on the new property, that any of their extension devices that, that they place them toward the rear of the property.
In there.
You comfortable with that, Sean?
Yes, sir. We're comfortable with that. Okay?
The exact same conditions are applied to this property.
Man, Sean, you're the best.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow outdoor rental storage in a C4 zone for property located at 3719 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
About a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And Alderman Robinson is the only listed sponsor. Did Alderman Taylor want to be a?
Absolutely. Without objection, we'll add Mr. Taylor to that.
Okay. That concludes your business.
Thank you. Mr. Witcher?
Mayor, several of you have probably been getting calls regarding the planning commission meeting tomorrow in connection with a posery zoning piece of property on Randolph and McCain.
Really?
Mr. Height and I had quite a conversation on the way in. One of the things that we need to emphasize is that the property now is only being considered for change of zoning. The next process will be, if they are successful, applying to have a plat approved, and that would be July, August timeframe. I feel confident if it gets through that far, that it'll get to us. And, you know, and I'll tell you that, well, I can't speak for Mr. Height. I think I can, but, you know, neither one of us propose to sponsor that legislation if it comes to the council. So, it'll be up to the mayor or someone else to do that. But, you know, we wanted to make sure that the public knew. I think, Sean, your meeting starts at 4:30, is that right?
4:45.
4:45, here in the council chambers tomorrow.
I believe it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission does not approve that.
Correct.
That's correct. Now, you know, if it, if it gets to that point, you know, we'll have to do for consideration only, as our council tells us that. So, okay, the public comment section.
Is this our time?
No.
Oh, we're after public comment.
Yeah. Oh, okay. That's a great number two.
Hank Klein, Mr. Klein, you're up first. We'll try to keep your comments to three minutes, sir, if you can.
Well done, Murray. Good evening, North Little Rock mayor, council members, city employees. My name's Hank Klein. I want to make you aware of a new company that's coming to your city. A company called Cash Max Loan Services is going to, is going to open up at 4700 JFK Boulevard using a CSO credit service organization model, like the owner Chaney Pruitt has, with his payday loan stores located in Texas. The combined CSO fee and interest charge calculates to a finance charge that is 16 times what the interest rate of 17% is as a maximum in the Arkansas Constitution.
Mr. Klein?
Hold on just a second.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ross?
I'd ask to have a photo of what he was speaking about. Could we, I think Nathan has a photo. It would help with the explanation, I think. I don't know if he has it or not. We'll see.
Yeah, there it is. Okay, Mr. Klein, go ahead. Now, we've got it on TV. It's on.
Okay, all right. In 2008, Chaney Pruitt had a Cash Now store located at 3301 JFK Boulevard. It was on the other side of the street, about two blocks down, and he was asked to close down by the Arkansas Attorney General. Back in 2008, a $350 loan cost the borrower a total finance charge of $53.34 for a 14-day loan. That store closed on December 15th of 2008, and now they're trying to reopen and will charge even more for a loan. At Chaney Pruitt's new store, not opened yet, Cash Max Loan Services will offer loans from $300 to $1,000. The total finance charge for a $300 loan will be $88.12 for a $300 loan with four payments due every payday every 14 days. This loan costs more than their loans did back in 2008. I've been told by the city clerk that Chaney Pruitt applied for and was approved a business privilege license as administrative office. The type of business they really intend to operate is issuing installment payday loans and check cashing. I don't know why the proper license was, wasn't issued and applied for, but, you know, I don't really know why. And I understand just today, it was changed to a financial advisor. Most of us think of a financial advisor as maybe Stevens or someone like that that's going to take your money and advise you the best place to put it in. They're going to take your money, or they're going to give you money and take your loan payments from you. I'd urge the city council to place a moratorium on granting any license to Cash Max or any lender who is going to charge more than the 17% maximum as stated in the Arkansas Constitution. We got an ordinance passed, number 7985, passed by the city council right here in 2007, which did not allow any additional licenses to be issued to payday lenders or check cashers for a period of two years. The ordinance called for the Department of Community Planning to conduct a study on these businesses and their harm to the community. I don't know if that study was ever actually completed, but the Arkansas Supreme Court determined in three different opinions in 2008 that their loans were excess, in excess of the interest rate allowed in the Arkansas Constitution and were illegal. All the payday stores throughout the state closed in 2009. Now, Cash Max Loan Services is trying to reopen and charge consumers loans in excess of 250%. Please don't let this happen. Please don't issue them a license to operate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
One more thing. Let me just tell you that on a state level, the old check cashers used to be licensed. The Supreme Court said that those loans were illegal. The State Board of Collection Agencies told those folks to send back their licenses. They were no longer licensed. Nobody in the state licensed this lender, okay? So, I believe this is something that the city can take care of.
Are you on top of this, counselor?
Well, we're getting into the issue. This is a brand-new business, and I think that they're trying to, as Mr. Klein said, they're trying to change the definition of who they are and what they're about and exactly what they're offering. These kind of numbers that, you know, are being presented, you know, if this is the business model that they want to try to offer in North Little Rock, we don't have any choice, I think, but to fight back on part of our citizens. I think, you know, when you're looking at a, at someone being charged, you know, a total finance charge of $88 for borrowing 300 bucks for two months, that's just unconscionable, you know, and it appears contrary to the Constitution. So, this is something that we're going to have to investigate more about exactly what it is that they're doing. I know our city clerk has been knee-deep into this issue, and we've been in communication with her office, and I think the attorney general may be involved as well.
Sean, that's your baby, so kind of keep an eye on legal and city clerk, make sure they're working, will you?
Okay.
You bet. Ms. Ross?
As I understand it, because I've been looking through their sites and everything, and I've been by and I've spoke with Mr. Klein, not only is it the finance charge, you're also charged the CSO fee, which is $81, so that's closer to $169.
I think they roll those together. I think they're rolling together the total finance charges.
Right. It's included in that. I'm just saying, that's $169 to borrow 300 for four pay periods is what, everything that I've understood on the website. Mr. Klein, is that what you understood also? I want to make sure that we've got this.
I think it's, I think the total amount is, is the 88.12.
No, no. This, the CSO fee is also.
They're trying to look like they're legal, okay? They're charging a 17% interest rate and then the CSO fee on top of that, and the total is 88.
It's $169 to borrow $300.
But, again, when they were operating this thing back when payday loans supposedly, we thought they were legal, they were only charging $53 for that, for a larger loan, a $350 loan, so.
Total payback.
It's a ripoff. Consumers shouldn't be allowed to do this. It's only going to hurt, hurt poor folks, poor folks with poor credit, people that think they can't get it anywhere else. And, of course, that's why it was, they were all shut down in 2009, and we just shouldn't let them open back up.
And I think we all agree with you, Mr. Klein, and we'll certainly get the attorney general involved in it.
Mayor, do we know who the owner is?
I stand corrected, okay.
You don't have to stand corrected.
No, it is. I understand now.
Yeah, yeah.
The lender's only receiving $6.37.
Can we bring him here?
The finance. Got you, got you, got you.
Let's let legal get into it. I would rather, I'd rather him answer questions instead of us.
Okay.
We might ask the wrong question.
Well, and can I, can I say something?
We wouldn't have that.
When this, when Mr. Klein brought this to my attention Tuesday, I did go back and speak with Jason and did some research and spoke with different people at their company and had several different answers to the questions I asked. And so, we did refer it to the attorney general's office, and Jason and I have been communicating back and forth on this. So, and I spoke with Chaney, is it Chaney Pruitt? Spoke with him today, and he still thinks that he is an administrative office, and I told him that, under our definition, we did not believe he was. So, he was going to talk to his attorney and then let us know what he thinks he is.
Great. Well, let's have his attorney talk to our attorney.
That's what we're going to do.
That's right. Sounds good to me. Jimmy Art.
I definitely realize you all are not supposed to answer questions, so just tell me who I need to talk to. I've received in the mail in the last four weeks, want me to purchase a water line and sewer line deal, and it implies it's coming from the council members. Can you, I know Mayor Hayes was upset about something when he was in office. Is this a legal thing?
We've endorsed their, we've endorsed their company. I'll answer that question for you.
So, it's a, it's a good deal to take out if you want to.
Yeah, you can either warranty it yourself or pay seven, eight dollars a month and they'll warrant it for you.
Thank you.
And I can answer any question that you would have on that matter, sir.
They're, they're very reputable. They've honored every claim that we've had.
Is it just from the house out, or is it under the house too?
Well, actually, there's, there's two warranties. There's one from, from where your sewer line connects to, from your foundation to where the sewer line connects to the city's main, and then there's the new warranty that, that covers all inside plumbing.
Does this cover your water line?
Then, then there's another one that covers your water line.
Yeah, because I got two of them. Okay, just want to make sure the city knew what was going on.
Yeah, we do. Thank you, Jimmy. John Gregan?
Thank you for letting me address the mayor and the city council. My name is John Gregan.[1627.47]